That's great. Thanks, Steve.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this morning's briefing, COVID-19 briefing, on today, which is Friday, the 15th of October 2021. It's good to see you all here. As Steve has said, this is being recorded and the link will be sent out later. I'm Abby from the County Council Comms team and I'm here with Steve Thorne, who's Comms Manager at the City Council, Nottingham City Council. So thank you. It's good to be here. The briefing follows the usual format with updates from the panel. And oh, sorry, I just heard my voice come back at me there, which is a bit scary. Excuse me. And our panel today are Jonathan Gribbin, who's Director of Public Health at Nottinghamshire County Council, Lucy Hubbard, Director of Public Health at Nottingham City Council, and we have Rosa Waddington, who's the Chief Nurse for the Nottinghamshire and Nottingham CCG. And welcome to you all, and especially welcome to Rosa, because this is your first briefing. After our panel provided the updates, I will open the floor to questions. So what I'm going to do now is hand over to the panel, starting with Rosa. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Abby. Yes, so we've seen 50 admissions relating to COVID-19 in the seven days up to the 10th of October. And that compares to 62 in the previous week. Again, we've seen a slight reduction in our hospitals, in the number of beds occupied by COVID-positive patients, decreasing from 161 beds on the 5th of October to 137 beds. And of those beds, 16 were occupied by people who were automatically ventilated, and in a very critical condition. But our hospitals are still treating a number of unvaccinated people who really are very poorly with COVID-19. So as we head into the winter, it's really important that those who are most at risk make sure they've had both their flu and their COVID booster vaccination. And that's what I wanted to focus on talking to you about this morning. So our vaccination programme's going really well. Over 80% of those over 18 in Nottingham and Nottinghamshire have now received two doses. And our schools' vaccination programme's working well, and that schools' vaccination team are also preparing to roll out flu vaccinations, which will include a non-pourcine vaccine for children in schools. And as you know, our booster programme is up and running with now over 32 options for people to have their vaccines. That's 17 pharmacies, 15 primary care led sites open today, with more opening across the weekend. But most excitingly, our booster programme from tomorrow, you will be able to walk into a number of our centres. So the Mansfield Vaccination Centre and the Kingsman Mill Hospital, you'll be able to receive your booster dose. And for those in the city, the Forest Rec site, when it reopens next week on Thursday, the 21st of October, people who are eligible, so over six months since their second vaccination, will be able to walk in and get a vaccination there. So that really is some really positive news. So with that update, I'm going to hand over to Jonathan.
Good morning, everyone. What we've heard about the vaccine programme, I think, is also a reminder to us that compared with a year ago, the prospects for winter this year are really very much better, but still not easy. And with that in mind, there are two things that I'm wanting to emphasise to you and that we will need to, I think, return to probably repeatedly in the weeks and months ahead. On the one hand, we need to keep in mind that the pandemic is not over and COVID remains a serious health risk. On the other hand, we have a safe pathway forward through this. But that safe pathway involves a combination of things. First of all, the vaccine. And I'm delighted that the booster programme is rolling out now in Nottinghamshire and that we're all able to take advantage of that for those of us who received our first jabs six months ago. But also alongside that, it's important to remember that we also need to keep going with a number of basic control measures as well. Because it's that combination of vaccine and basic control measures which provide us the safe pathway through this winter. And I particularly wanting to give that weight to that this morning, bearing in mind what we see happening around case rates, infection rates in Nottinghamshire County in particular. Because although we're really pleased to see that in terms of COVID activity, things in our hospitals are relatively stable. Nevertheless, we are seeing some increasing rates across the county. So in comparison with an England average, which currently stands at 376 per 100,000, in Nottinghamshire County overall at the moment, we've seen rates increase recently up to today 556 per 100,000. So that's an increase of about a fifth or so on what I would have reported to you a week ago. And in the county, we see increases across all of our districts and boroughs at the moment, which range from a rate at its lowest in the county, 460, I think that's in Brockstow, up to 671 per 100,000 in Bassett Law. And that upward trend continues something that we've seen going on over the last several weeks since early September. Now, previously, I would have emphasised to you that that was driven quite strongly by increasing rates amongst children and young people, and in particular amongst children and young people of secondary school age. But increasingly, what we've seen over the last couple of weeks or so are increases also in older age groups. So adults aged over 40 and adults aged over 60. And what we're seeing is absolutely consistent with a picture of ongoing widespread community transmission. And that brings a reminder to us all that the advice to act carefully and remain cautious is for everyone. Right across all of Nottinghamshire, in whichever district or borough you might live, and whatever your age. So this really means coming back to, again, making sure that we take advantage of the vaccines that are available to us. I'm really pleased that we're rolling out the vaccines now to 12- to 15-year-olds in our schools, that we have the booster programme underway as well. And I would just reiterate the importance as well of taking advantage of any vaccines and immunisations that are available to you this winter. And in particular, I'd encourage you to take up the flu vaccine. But alongside that, with so much COVID still in circulation, it's as important as it ever was that if you find that you have symptoms of coronavirus, so a new continuous cough, a high fever, or a loss of change in sense of taste and smell, it's really important that you isolate right away and get a PCR test. Because it's by doing that that you can help us stop passing on the virus to other people. Along with that, with some beautiful weather around, at least today, it's a reminder too that we should take advantage when we're mixing with other people, whenever we can, let's make sure that's out of doors for as long as we've got this good weather with us, and perhaps over the half-term period. But if we're meeting up indoors, it's really important that we make sure that the rooms that we're in and that we're sharing with other people have really good ventilation, so make sure those windows are open. If you're in a crowded or enclosed space, please make sure that you're using face coverings as well. Because that's another way that we limit transmission of a virus which we know is passed on so easily. And then alongside all of this, we continue to provide arrangements for people in Nottinghamshire to twice-weekly undertake asymptomatic testing. And I'd encourage all of you to build that into your routine as well. It's another way in which we can find a safe pathway through the winter months. And with that, I think I'll pass over to Lucy Hubbard, Director of Public Health in the city.
Hi. Good morning, everyone. I think Jonathan has just given a really fantastic summary of all that we can still do individually to protect ourselves. In the city, we're seeing a fairly stable case rates of about 250 per 100,000. And that's roughly how it's been for the last three or four weeks. But that doesn't mean to say that we're through COVID in the city. That's still much higher than it was this time last year. And so we all need to be thinking about the actions that we can take in order to protect those around us. The great news is that vaccination is showing that serious illness from COVID is reduced. If you haven't yet had your vaccine, it's not too late. Please come along to one of our vaccine centres and get vaccinated. If you have any concerns at all, there are clinicians available at each of the vaccine centres that you can share those concerns with and make your decision on the best information available. Getting tested is really important, and particularly with half-term coming up, we're likely to be mixing in different groups, young people seeing grandparents or going away on holiday. Getting tested before you go and meet other people and certainly before you go back to school is something we can all do that will make really big difference. And we've heard this week just how effective those rapid tests are. So we can use those and rely on those with a great deal of confidence. And right now, they're available for you to pick up, to take home from pharmacies or from our testing centres. Or if you like to be supported, we've still got testing centres available that you can come in and be guided through how to do a test. Finally, the one thing that we can all do every day is wear a face covering. If we're in places where we're very close to other people, such as in supermarkets, busy shops, buses, trains or trams, wear a face covering. It protects those people around you and their face coverings protect you. If we all do it, it makes a really big difference. We're not through COVID yet, but we do want to go about doing the things that enable us to live our normal lives, seeing friends, going out in the evenings, going out to shops. It's these things, getting tested, getting vaccinated and wearing a face covering, that mean that we can continue to do that. And finally, just want to pick up on Rosa's point about flu. We all know that last year, because we were washing our hands and wearing face coverings and keeping our distance, we had a very low level of flu. This year, as we're mixing more, we're expecting to see more flu. So if you are eligible for a flu vaccine, please come and get your vaccine. You can have it at the same time as your COVID vaccine. You don't need to leave a long gap. And it's something that we can do that will make a real difference. Thank you.
So thank you to our panel for those updates and good news there about the walk-in opportunities available and a reminder about what we still need to do to find a safe pathway through COVID. Because, you know, as we all know, it's still here, it's still with us. So I'm going to go to questions now, and as usual, I'd ask you to raise hands. I see hands already up, so I'll come to people. I just want to say, if you're going to have one question and one follow-up, please, that gives everyone an opportunity to ask questions. Could you please state where you're from for the purpose of the recording, so that we've got that on record? And if I do miss your hand at any point, don't worry, I will make sure I come back at the end and make sure I pick up anyone whose hand I can't see if anyone has any outstanding questions. So I will go to hands raised, and I think the first one is Jo. Jo Locka.
Hi there, Abby. Yes, thanks very much. And good to see you all again. I hope everyone's doing well. So the first question that we wanted to ask from the Nottingham Post was, in terms of just today, you've obviously probably seen the stories about the inaccurate COVID tests. I believe it was around 43,000 people were given an incorrect negative result. We just wanted to find out if there had been any impact of this in Nottingham or Nottinghamshire. Cheers.
Thank you. Who would like to pick that up?
I'm happy to start off on that one. And Jo, it's nice to see you as well, and hope you're doing okay. In response to your question, I'm not aware of any impacts at the moment for Nottinghamshire arising from what I've heard reported in the media regarding other parts of the country. But I think it's worth underlining that the quality assurance systems and arrangements that are in place, underpinning some of this infrastructure, by which some of these things come to light. And so I'm really pleased that the arrangements that we've got in place provide a very high level of assurance in terms of the quality and the performance of the testing that we've got across the country and certainly in Nottinghamshire.
That's great. Thanks, Jonathan.
Is that okay? Jo, do you have any follow-up or was that?
Yes, we do. I'll try and tie this all into one. So first of all, obviously, a couple of months ago, councillor Sally Longford raised a couple of concerns in terms of students returning to university, you know, in case we saw a similar kind of rise that we saw last year. But obviously, looking at the latest government data, it looks like the areas predominantly inhabited by students are some of the lowest in Nottingham and Nottinghamshire. So we just wanted to kind of find out what this was all about, I suppose. And obviously, this might be one for Rosa as well. What sort of concerns have you got in terms of, as you said, flu and COVID together as we go into the winter? Cheers.
Well, I'll start on that answer, Jo, and it's cheeky because you actually threw two follow-up questions in there. I don't think we didn't spot that. So in terms of our case rates in the city, we have seen higher case rates amongst school-aged children and all other adult age groups. So 18 and above have actually been really very, very stable. And that has been common since the beginning of September through to now. So it's a six-week picture, and as you point out during that time, we've had a large return of students to the city. What we have noticed since our students have returned is the tremendous vaccination uptake amongst that population. And they are really showing us, our young people, those aged 18 to 22, are really showing us how young people understand the importance of vaccination, understand the protection that it gives not just to them, but to the wider community, which means that they can go about living their lives. And we are incredibly grateful to our young people, not just students, but to young people across the city for the way that they have taken up that offer. And similarly, we're now seeing that in schools as well. I think probably the other thing to say is that the universities have been absolutely outstanding around the work that they did before students came back. So they were giving lots of messages right through from June, July, up until the day that students came back, around encouraging good practice, participation in testing and vaccination. And I think that's also showing in those figures as well. So, you know, not just thank you to the young people, but thank you to our partners across the universities for the tremendous work that they have undertaken. And we're seeing the benefits of that in our figures and the reduced transmission in those age groups.
Super. And in relation to the second part of that question, we know that the people who are vulnerable are vulnerable from flu as much as they're vulnerable from COVID. So that's why we know that getting both of these will have a significant impact on the well-being of those people. And as Lucy and Jonathan talked about, some of those measures that people have taken really robustly over the last year in terms of handwashing, masks and space, have seen a real reduction in the flu numbers in our system. That's not the case this year. We're already seeing a significant amount of flu coming into our hospitals. So we're really keen to manage that. So it's expected it's going to be the first winter this year when seasonal flu will sort of co-circulate with COVID-19. So that's, I suppose, why we expect the impact to be on the same group of people and to make them potentially significantly unwell.
Lovely. Appreciate your answer to my cheeky three questions. Thanks very much.
We'll forgive you, Jo. Next hand up is Hugh Caswell.
Morning, everyone. Yeah, Hugh from BBC Nottingham here. Firstly, following on from Jo's question about the lab in Wolverhampton, it's good to hear there's no indication of an impact on testing here in Nottinghamshire. And could you perhaps expand on that a little though? Where do tests taken in Nottingham and Nottinghamshire go? Is there a particular lab? How does it work exactly? But also, just hearing about that one lab in Wolverhampton, people may be getting test results and wondering, naturally, can they be relied upon? So can you reassure people that they can really believe in the test results that they get?
Perhaps I should pick that one up in the first instance, following on from the comments I made a couple of minutes ago, Hugh. So actually, I'll struggle to expand on exactly where in the system the tests taken in Nottingham get passed. And actually, there's a network of labs. I would have to go and do a little bit more prep offline to provide you a more detailed response around that. But to pick up then the second part of what you were asking about there. As I said before, we've currently got no indication that there's an impact for people in Nottinghamshire. If that becomes apparent, then we'd quickly be in touch with people across Nottinghamshire to alert them to that in similar ways as has been done elsewhere in the country. The reason we'll be able to do that is on the back of the quality assurance arrangements that are in place, which is able to highlight glitches like this in the system. So my recommendation to people in Nottinghamshire is that they can have confidence in the system because of the measures that are in place to spot issues and glitches like this and then to rectify them. It's not an assurance that there is never, ever going to be some kind of glitch. The important thing is that we've got the arrangements around that to identify it and deal with it. Thanks.
Thanks, Jonathan. Yeah, I was asking quite a lot of you there to be able to name every single lab that every single test goes to, wasn't I? But so that if someone gets a positive on a lateral flow test, but a negative through their subsequent PCR test, what could the explanation for that be? Because one of those tests has to be wrong, doesn't it? But also, what should that person, you know, do? What should they do, even if there's just a shred of doubt in their mind?
So they should continue to stick with the advice and the protocol that's out there at the moment, which is, in terms of the test results, Lucy will correct me if on any of the detail. But in terms of getting a PCR negative immediately following a positive LFT, it's the PCR negative that people should attend to, rather than the positive they previously received. But alongside that, there are other measures that people will be putting in place in any case and will want to ensure that other basic control measures are things that they continue to follow, including within that, the twice-weekly LFT testing, which remains a useful additional protection for us and those around us in any case. Lucy, do you want to comment further on the issue around the positive followed by the negative?
Yeah, I mean, I think you've said it well, Jonathan. Hugh, the way that it works is that the tests are sent where there's capacity. So we don't have a local lab that Nottinghamshire tests go to. They go nationally wherever there's capacity, which means that the impact of one lab will be small on any one area. So there is currently no indication around a significant impact in Nottinghamshire for what's happened in Wolverhampton. If somebody tests positive on LFT but they're negative on PCR, but they still feel very ill with the symptoms of COVID, it's very sensible that they continue to do the things that will keep other people around them safe because they're clearly not very well. If they suspect that there may be something wrong, then they should perhaps, you know, continue to take a rapid test in order to confirm if that first test was right or not. But the most important thing is that if you are feeling well, if you are coughing, if you are, you know, a little bit snotty like we all get at this time of year, if you're feeling under weather, try and keep your distance from other people. Try and work from home if you're able to. Make sure you wear a face covering. Make sure you wash your hands. Those are the things that we can all do, regardless of whether it's COVID or flu or just a winter bug, that we can do to keep other people safe.
Thank you both. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next hand up is Matt. Matt Jarom.
Question, Matt? Hello. Good morning, all. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes, we can. Thank you.
Oh, brilliant. And first question really is to Rosa. You said there was 137 patients, beds of 60 that are critically ill. Could you just give us sort of an indication of how many of those have not received the vaccine? And some of the reasons why that might be? And to Jonathan and Lucy, what percentage of people have not been vaccinated in the city and the county? And what ages are they? What are some of the reasons why? You know, what are the groups that you're struggling to get the vaccine? And sort of my second question to Jonathan and Lucy really is outdoor events. I know the city council has decided not to run the bonfire night event. I just wondered what your opinions of that were, because across the country, a lot of other councils are running outside of that. Yeah, those are two questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So apologies, I don't have a percentage number of that 137 admissions that are unvaccinated. Although my hospital colleagues tell me it is a larger proportion of the people who are seriously ill with COVID, but we will certainly get those figures for the next briefing. I'm not sure if you wanted more detail around that, because I think the reasons for people refusing vaccination remain as they always have been in the work we're doing with Lucy and Jonathan to try and tackle providing education, increasing access. So one of the reasons we've moved in phase three of the vaccination programme to having sort of 50 smaller sites spread out much more across our county based in local communities is hopefully to overcome some of that vaccine hesitancy that people have had, or maybe just it was too far away and a bit tricky to get to. So we have an evergreen offer, if you like, so that at any point, anybody who hasn't been vaccinated can walk in, can start that first vaccination, you know, it's not too late. Just because we're doing boosters, people who want to start their COVID vaccination, because perhaps their pharmacy on their high street or somewhere close to them is doing it, should take up that opportunity and do it. So we're doing all we can to make this as easy, as accessible for people as possible. And where people do have queries or concerns about receiving the vaccination and whether it might be for them or something that they want to do, you know, I would suggest that you go and talk to your GPs, talk to the pharmacist in your local pharmacy. You know, raise your anxieties and they can talk you through, you know, the evidence, the information, and you can make a decision. So we're doing all we can to try and address that.
Then, Matt, don't think we didn't notice that you asked three questions as well. So, Matt, then you asked us around uptake in our populations. For city, the lowest vaccine uptake for city is in our 25- to 40-year-olds. And trying to understand why that might be really begins to come down, I think, to some people's individual risk assessment, that they think that they're young enough that they won't get very poorly, but they're old enough that they don't really want to be going to the nightclubs and the bars that they'll need COVID passes for. So really important that we get across to people that COVID actually is still really serious and really transmissible. And so the vaccine helps to reduce serious illness and therefore death, and that actually reduces the spread of COVID as well. So even if you think you're not likely to get very poorly, you probably spend time with people who are vulnerable in some way, whether it's age or whether it's through weather condition, and you taking the vaccine. and you taking the vaccine will help protect them. Vaccine works by enough of us having the vaccine that we're able to protect the wider population. So really important for people to have the vaccine, not just for themselves, but for those people that they they enjoy spending time with, that they work with, that they sit next to on the bus. It's part of all of our responsibility. So we are working, as Rosa said, to try and make having a vaccine as easy as possible. And although we're talking about, you know, the third boosters for people, it's not too late to come and have your first and your second jabs with us. It's never too late. And if you've got any concerns, as Rosa really well outlined, there's so many people now that you can come and talk to and ask advice. You can come to the vaccine centre with no commitment, just come and have a conversation. You can talk to pharmacists, you can talk to your GP practice. Have those conversations with trusted health professionals. He'll be able to give you the proper information. And that's really important where people are getting their information from. Lots of stuff still circulating on, you know, WhatsApp groups or on Facebook that is misleading. If you've got some of that information and you're worried about it, come and talk to a health professional. They'll listen to your concerns and they'll help you make sense of it for you. And I think that's the most important thing that people can do right now is make sure that they're making the right decision. Don't make no decision. Don't just sit at home and think it's too hard or it's too late. Come and have a conversation and make the right decision for you.
Is there a percentage, Lucy, of people that haven't been vaccinated within the city?
I think, and Rosa's got the vaccine figures for us. So about two-thirds, I think, of the city population are fully vaccinated. And really good uptake rates in the over 50s and really good uptake rates in our younger people. It is that 25 to 40-year-olds that we really would like to participate more.
So on the back of what Lucy said, Matt, let me just add a comment or two. So in overall terms, I think what the NHS vaccination programme has been able to deliver in Nottinghamshire has been fantastic. And I think it was fairly recently that it hit a kind of significant milestone in terms of the total number of vaccine doses that have been delivered. And I'm really pleased about the uptake rate in general amongst those people, those groups who are most vulnerable. But the reason for emphasising the evergreen offer and the ongoing work to address some of the variation is that we don't want to find that there are communities or age groups or geographical areas that in any way are left behind and miss out on the protection that the vaccine provides. So that is something that we continue to work, we're really pleased to work closely with Rosa and her colleagues to continue to focus on that. And so, for example, you know, we continue to be in discussion about how we address not only those who are clinically vulnerable, but whose social circumstances might render them particularly vulnerable as well. And we're pleased to continue to do work with, for example, interventions like the vaccine bus to address and make sure that we're reaching out in a really effective way to people who might not otherwise have access to the vaccine. So that might include, for example, people who are homeless or at risk of homelessness, living in hostile situations where for a variety of reasons, they wouldn't otherwise get access. So this remains very much on our agenda. And we're keen to make sure that everyone right across Nottinghamshire really has a genuine opportunity to protect themselves. And not only with the COVID vaccines, but also with the other vaccines that are important to protect ourselves and those around us this winter, including the flu vac. Thanks.
The outdoor events question. Sorry, Lucy.
You could save that one till next week.
I think it's really important with all of these events that they're a collection of different decisions that are made and COVID is one element of them. And outdoor events are not a single group. So the way that people interact in these outdoor events, how long they stand in one place surrounded by other people, how much they move and pass and what space there is to move and pass, they're all part of the considerations that we have. Really different if you can control the entry and test people and, you know, as we've done with some of the festivals we had, we had Detonate back in September and they were able to use COVID passes to check people as they were arriving. These big open access events, particularly, you know, where people are standing still in a large crowd for a long period of time, really change that whole dynamic and a part of that consideration. So we don't have a single response to outdoor events in the city. We do look at each event and take into account all of the different mitigating measures that we can put into COVID as well as other considerations that are all part of that decision-making. Thank you for that, Lucy. I'm going to move on now to the next person with the hand up, who is Connor. Connor, do you have a question?
Yeah, hello, everybody. I think this is for Jonathan. During the first three waves, it was the towns in our district, Newark and Sherwood, that had the higher infection rates. But just looking at the interactive government map, it's pretty clear to see that it's sort of the more rural areas and the villages that are the hotspots, if you like. It's been a similar picture for, I'd say about a month now that we've been sort of keeping tabs on it. Do you know why that is? Is it because it's a smaller area and sort of like five infections shoots it up or?
So Connor, thanks for your question. And a question on variation on that is something that we continue to challenge ourselves with as well. I think my answer is properly general. And that is to say that what we continue to see across Nottinghamshire is widespread general community transmission. That means that at the moment, all of our towns and our rural areas as well, and indeed the wider conurbation around the city is impacted to some extent by that. There aren't particular areas that I would wish to highlight as hotspots in the sense that special or additional measures are required there, which are not required elsewhere. Rather than to bring things back to the point that we made earlier on, that it's a combination of making sure each of us takes advantage of the vaccine and alongside that, that we can each continue with the basic measures around test and isolate, face coverings, making sure that our enclosed spaces are well-ventilated and so on. It's that combination of things which is going to keep communities out in our villages and in our towns and in Nottingham City and its conurbation really safe over the coming weeks and months.
Thank you, Jonathan. Connor, did you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, that's brilliant. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next person whose hand is up is George. George Hancon.
Good morning all. George from ITV Central, my first briefing with you this morning. So thank you for having me. Can I just ask that we are, because we're recording this for TV, anyone that does answer the next question can potentially pin themselves just so we've got them taking the full screen. That'd be great. My first question, just off the back of, you've all talked about the importance of flu jabs. We've been talking to some pharmacies in the region and they say that they have had to turn some people away. They're waiting on supplies. Supplies are slow. Is there a major concern around that that you have when people are being invited to come forward for their flu jab?
Thanks. So I'll come in on that. And I think if you could pin me, thank you. Obviously, when people are inviting patients in to have their vaccinations, they're doing that knowing the stock that they have in place. So it isn't something that's come up and been highlighted as a particular issue for our practices and pharmacies. But we are aware that there are some delays elsewhere and we're keeping an eye on it.
That's great. Thank you. And just to follow up, if I can, you've all also talked about, you know, those sort of mitigating factors. You've talked about face coverings if you're indoors. Essentially, just being aware of those things we've been, we've all been very used to the last year. Is there still concerns around compliance for some people? We obviously know as restrictions have continued to ease just from being out and about, certainly people are wearing face coverings less often. Do you hope that compliance continues or are there still concerns around that as we get into the trickier winter months?
I can kick off with that. And Georgie, nice to meet you online and welcome this morning. I think I'd really want to start off by acknowledging what people right across Nottinghamshire have worked really hard to do right through the last year and more, which is to stick with measures which at various times have been enormously challenging, but which communities, households, individuals have kept going with. And that's what's enabled us to come to a point, along with the vaccine, where we can plot a safe pathway through the next winter. So my concern is not first of all with compliance, it's my concern is with coronavirus and the fact that it's passed on so easily from one person to another. So that means as well as making sure that we've each taken advantage of the vaccine, we still need to keep going with some of those other basic control measures as well because it's the combination of the two which is going to keep ourselves, our families and our communities really safe. And that's really what my emphasis would be on for the winter.
That's great. Thank you both.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Just looking again, oh, Hugh. Another question? Is that your hand up? Or was that a legacy hand?
I thought I'd put it down, actually.
No, it's gone now. That's all right. Thank you. And Connor, is that hand still up or is this a new question? Oh, no, that's gone as well. Okay, thank you. I'm just checking to make sure I haven't missed anybody and that everybody has had a chance to ask their questions. And now I can see no more hands up. So I'm going to take that as meaning that everyone has had their questions answered by members of the panel. Yeah, that seems to be the case. So I'm just going to go back to the panel now and ask each person if there's any last message that they want to share with people sort of on the briefing today. And I think I'll go first to Rosa.
Thank you. The only thing I'd like to reiterate is the importance of having your flu vaccine as well as your COVID vaccine and that new offer of a walk-in to our two sites at Kingsmore Hospital and in Manthfield from tomorrow and next Thursday at Forest Rec when it reopens to have your booster vaccination if it's six months since your second vaccine. So I'd just like to reiterate that, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Rosa. Then I'm going to go next to Lucy. Thanks, Abby. I think the message that we've been saying this morning is that COVID is something which we can't yet put to one side. And whilst we're all working to make sure that we've got access to vaccines and access to testing and the reliability and assurance around all of that, there's still stuff that each of us can do. And that's wear a face covering when we're out and about and in close proximity with other people, get tested regularly, or if you've got symptoms, no matter how mild, and get vaccinated. Whether you haven't yet had the opportunity, please come forward. Or whether you're able to get your third booster and be able to take up on the walk-in offer that we've heard about this morning. Those three things will make a really big difference to COVID. And we'll add in flu for the fourth one, and that'll make a really big difference for our winter. And that'll mean that we can all carry on living lives as normally as we possibly can if we can follow those four things. Thank you, Lucy. And finally, Jonathan, anything to add to that? Thank you.
So very much in the same spirit and vein as Lucy set out, it would be to remind people that the pandemic's not over. COVID remains a serious health risk. We've got a safe way forward that involves the vaccine. But also alongside that, we need to continue to act carefully and remain cautious. And that means following through on the things that we've described earlier on. I'd just add to this, we're just about to go into half-term. And so I think we collectively would want to wish our children and young people right across Nottinghamshire a really good break over the next couple of weeks. And along with them, school staff and head teachers as well. And to thank all of them for what they've been doing over the last several weeks to keep schools a safe environment for our children and young people. While you've got an opportunity to have some time away from school, I'd be wanting to urge children and young people to make sure that when they're getting together with mates, to do that out of doors wherever possible. Because the risk of passing on the virus between you is much lower if you're out of doors. If you are indoors, please get those windows open. And if you're going out into town or on public transport, make sure you use a face covering as well because we can help protect one another in that way. Thanks.
Well, thank you very much for that, Jonathan. Thank you to all of our panel members this morning for your time sharing your messages and updating people. Want to thank media colleagues for being here, for, you know, helping us to get our messages across, for their questions and their follow-up questions, many follow-up questions, but just really getting to the heart of some of these issues. And again, making sure those messages go out. And thanks to other colleagues as well who have mentioned, that have supported this. And I just want to say, have a good weekend to everybody. Enjoy the half-term break if you're having a break. And we look forward to seeing you again for the next briefing on the 29th. So thank you very much and take care all. Bye-bye.
Thank you, everyone. Bye now.